Councilman Welch.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Resolution BOE Number 2020-0121-1 as it stands.
That we can do.
I'm sorry, as amended by stricken out by the clerk. Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Discussion? Discussion?
Do we have all of the payments reflected on this? Okay.
Yes, we do.
Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
We have four yes votes, one no vote, and one absent with Mr. Shannon voting no.
Thank you. Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns to adjourn. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. And one minute to... Rest. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, January 21st. It is 6:01 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would remain standing for the invocation, I believe Father Tom Jones is here from the Church of the Holy Spirit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather to conduct the business of our city, we do so seeking your guidance and your blessing. Guide us to make wise decisions in the work before us, that the decisions we make are made with right intentions, in the best interest of those we serve, and with a mind towards proper stewardship of the resources we have been entrusted with. Give our city council discerning hearts as they listen to those who may offer witness to the issues at hand, and enable those who approach the council to state clearly their thoughts and concerns. Enable all present to see that what we hold in common as citizens of our fine city is more important than our differences, so that working together, we might make a difference in the lives of those we encounter along our journey, and those who depend upon us to act faithfully and responsibly. Finally, Lord, bless those gathered in this place, that they may know your love and grace, and knowing it, might embrace it, share it, and be what guides us as a community towards right relationship with you and one another. Amen.
Thank you, Father Jones. Susan, roll call, please.
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
On the telephone.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Ms. Welch.
Here.
Councilman Preister is on the phone for conversation only. He cannot vote, but he is present via phone. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Stinson. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Are there any items that a council member would like to remove? Take a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. That will move us to item number seven, special presentations. And we'll do that right now. During the afternoon of Saturday, January 11th, local photographer and businessman Terry Ingram was out near Harlan Lewis Road trying to capture the perfect picture of eagles in the area. At some point during the photo shoot, a white car flew by heading north over the railroad tracks in the area and lost control before crashing through the ice in an adjacent pond and landing upside down in the freezing water. Like to draw your attention to the monitors to show you a short clip that Channel 7 did on that. I met Terry at his ribbon cutting, and Terry, I found out you were a super nice guy in that short time we met. I just didn't realize you were a superhero.
Where he was at the right place at the right time. Sarpy County deputies say the three men are lucky Ingram was there when it happened.
I panicked when I heard the guy's voice get me out of this feeling for the water. Ah, man.
Terry Ingram was out in Bellevue Saturday afternoon taking photos of eagles when a white car flew past him.
This car just came right in front of me.
Deputies say three men were heading north on Harlan Lewis Road when they lost control crossing the railroad tracks.
They hit the 500, and I don't think they even touched the ground, because they were already airborne.
The car busted open the frozen water. Immediately Ingram knew the men had to be helped.
So I got the car and called 911. I looked down and he was turned upside down.
He ran quickly into the ice cold water, hearing a man's screams for help.
Once I pulled the door open, the water started going in, and he was coming out. And just seeing those bodies there, I thought they were gone.
Ingram alone rescued the three men. Two of them were taken to Nebraska Medicine with non-life threatening injuries. Later in the day Ingram saw a post in a community Facebook page from one of the men's mothers.
He said to the gentleman that saved my son, "Thank you." And I'm like, "Okay, thank you."
Now Ingram will look back at the pictures taken that day and be thankful the timing was just right.
God put people there in places for a certain reason. And I think he told me, "My camera's dead. You need to go up there and wait," and just sit.
Ingram hopes to meet up with the three men to see how they're doing. Tonight we spoke with the sister of the driver. She says her brother is being watched for hypothermia. She says her entire family is grateful for Terry. They call him their hero. Back to you.
The buffering was off a little bit, but the video was originally started out a little bit better, but Terry is a fantastic photographer as well. So Terry, would you meet me up at the podium, please? Terry Ingram, the city of Bellevue is proud of your efforts, and we are also happy that you were in the right place at the right time to help these three teenagers. I am honored to present you with the Mayor's Spotlight Life Savings Award as a small token of thanks for the acts of bravery and courage you demonstrated on Saturday, January 11th.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations again, Terry, and job well done. I know you didn't intend to do that job that day, but excellent job. Okay, we'll move to item number nine, approved citizen communication. One request received will be handled by meeting with city administrator. Was that agreed to, Jim, with the person that put it in, the request?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Item number 10, liquor licenses. 10A, recommendation to approve application for DLMGLC, doing business as Chandler Bar for replacing application of Class I 122048 liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits at 2617 Chandler Road West to approve Megan Gibbons as manager. Is there a representative here? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Bellevue City Council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here this evening on behalf of the applicant, and here to answer any questions you may have. Operationally, nothing's changing at this location, just the owners.
Okay. Stay close, and I'll open up the public hearing.
Great.
Is there anybody here wishing to speak for or against the application? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any questions, comments from the council? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, application for DLMGLC doing business as Chandler Bar for replacing application of Class I 122048 liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits at 2617 Chandler Road West to approve Megan Gibbons as manager.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any further comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Item 10-1, approve Resolution Number 2020-07 approving application of DLMGLC doing business under the name Chandler Bar with the name changes to continue to operate a satellite Keno location at 2617 Chandler Road West and authorize the mayor to sign.
Hello, I'm John Hassett, just here if you have any questions. It's change your ownership on an existing Keno satellite.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the application? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions for Mr. Hassett? All right, please vote.
Need a motion.
Well, didn't we get one? Nope. Need a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2020-07.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Now please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 10B, recommend approval of a special designated liquor license for St. Matthew's Catholic Church on Friday, February 21st, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM for a dinner and auction at 11210 South 36th Street. Is the applicant here? Please state your name and address.
My name is Susan May Lot. I live at 13003 South 33rd Circle in Bellevue.
Just here for questions. Do you have anything you want to say, or?
No, just that we, this is just a one-time event that we have, that we're actually having. I do, our address is listed incorrectly in the agenda here, but it's listed correctly on our application. Our address is 12210 South 36th Street.
Thank you for that correction. It's important. I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the special designated liquor license? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions, comments? Take a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the special designated liquor license for St. Matthew's Catholic Church on Friday, February 21st, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM for a dinner and auction at 12210 South 36th Street.
I'll second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Shannon. Any comments? Please vote.
Thank you.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 10C, recommend approval of six special designated liquor license for Knights of Columbus, Council 11879, St. Matthew's Parish to sell beer and wine at their Lenten Fish Fries at St. Matthew's Church, 11210 South 36th Street. Which I'm gonna change that now. It's 12210 South 36th Street. Bellevue from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM on six consecutive Fridays, February 28th, March 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, and April 3rd.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is David Boone. I represent the Knights of Columbus at St. Matthew's Catholic Church. And my address is 11720 South 39th Street. This is our, I believe, 24th consecutive year of running our fish fries, so appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the special designated liquor licenses? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments? Take a motion. Shannon?
I recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission of the six special designated liquor licenses for Knights of Columbus, Council 11879, St. Matthew's Parish to sell beer, wine at their Lenten Fish Fries at St. Matthew's Church, 12210 South 36th Street, from 5:00 to 7:30 on six consecutive Fridays.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10D, recommend approval of a special designated liquor license for Daniel J. Gross High School on Saturday, February 29th, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for a trivia night fundraiser at Daniel J. Gross High School, 7700 South 43rd Street, Bellevue.
Hi, my name is Janet Van Houten. I'm the business manager at Gross Catholic, and we're requesting a one-day license for trivia night, which benefits our football cheerleading and academic decathlon teams.
Okay. Is this your first time, or have you done this in the past?
2007 was our first trivia night, I believe.
Okay. All right, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the special designated liquor license? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Any further questions, comments? I'll take a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the special designated liquor license for Daniel J. Gross High School on Saturday, February 29th, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for a trivia night fundraiser at Daniel J. Gross High School, 7700 South 43rd Street, Bellevue.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. It's a lot of fun there, so be careful driving. Item 11, ordinances for adoption, third reading. There are none this evening. Item 12, ordinance for public hearing, second reading. 12A, ordinance number 3985, request approval to amend Section 19-3 of the Bellevue City Code pertaining to the non-exclusive illustrative list of examples of public nuisances. Susan, could you read the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Section 19-3 pertaining to the non-exclusive illustrative list of examples of public nuisances that exist pursuant to the definitions in Section 19.2, to repeal such section as heretofore existing in 19-3, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'm gonna let Bree talk on this a little bit.
Prior to opening it up for public hearing, I've had some discussion with our chief building inspector, Mike Christensen, and I briefly was able to talk to the council prior to coming into the meeting. And we would like to remove in the proposal 19-3, item Q regarding the lead paint enforcement. And I wanted to make that known prior to opening it up for a second hearing, or second reading. And when we go into final reading in two weeks, 19-3Q will be removed from the ordinance for approval by the council.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against ordinance number 3985? Please come forward.
My name's Michael Wills. I live at 13, it says here, 1321 Harrison Street, here in Bellevue. Excuse me. I read over this, these changes, and I wonder if it's ready for prime time. All of these changes. Really, let's go back and start with item N. Item N talks about water, any accumulation of stagnant water permitted or maintained. Who maintains stagnant water on their property? Just doesn't seem right. But does that include privately owned fish ponds? Or a pond owned by the city down Hayward Park? And what is meant by stagnant? What size? Do I have, if I, if a person has a coffee cup with three-day-old water in it, is that going to have, and my neighbor complains, code enforcement's gonna come down on me like a ton of bricks? I don't think that's right. I really don't. Item Q is that, is the paint, and we've dealt with that, so that's good. Item R, which talks about upholstered chairs and furniture. Now, what happened, and this is just for clarification, please. If you've got a porch swing, and you've got a, I don't know what you call it, but a piece of fabric with stuffing in it that you sit on, and a couple of pillows on that, is that going to get code enforcement down on a person's, or is that going to be allowed?
That would be allowed, because that's intended for outdoor use. So patio cushions on like patio furniture outside, there's lots of times where you have like a cushion where you tie to the bottom of your seat, or even like the back. Those things are all allowed, because that's intended for outdoor use.
Okay. Now, that's good. Some of this stuff is very open-ended, and very open to interpretation by whoever is the, and that's one of my other problems with this in general, is that it is open-ended, open to interpretation by, and it should be more, like the ponds. What are we talking about? Are we talking, somebody has a koi fish pond in their yard? And is that going to be standing water? Yeah, I think I can go back through this again. And item O, which is part, I thought a long time ago, this was already taken care of somewhere else. I can't find it in the city code. But I know I've had, I've seen cars being towed off because they were not registered. Do we need it, is this something that we are now just getting around to codifying? And we're taking people's cars in the back without due cause? Or was, is it somewhere else in the city code, and we're duplicating effort here?
It is the junked vehicles is what I'm gonna term it, is in a different section of the code. But this is also talking about any vehicle or machines or parts. So our prior is just the vehicle in and of itself, so this is wrapping it in and looking at it in a different way when you're talking about junked parts that are laying around, or machinery that's laying around.
Wouldn't that be part of, wouldn't that be covered in the other part of the ordinance? Or that was where this should be put into, not in nuisance ordinance?
Yeah, I'll look at that, Mike. That's a really good point. So I'll look, just make sure that we're not duplicating, and we have one thing over here, and something else over here. So I'll cross-reference those.
And, let me see, there was some, yeah, the one that I thought, being kind of open-ended, was this, "Every other act or thing done, made, permitted, allowed, or contained on any property, whether public or private, detrimental to the health or likely to injure any of the inhabitants of the city or its extraterrestrial jurisdiction." I mispronounced that word. I know. We're not talking about extraterrestrials. But that's open-ended. That is vague as it gets. If I don't like you, I can call the city and have them come after you. And I think, like I said, I think this needs to be tabled, reworked, and no, nobody, I'm not saying anything bad about anybody that wrote this, of course, but it needs to be more specific. And I think I've taken enough of your time for the evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for or against the changes, ordinance number 398? Thank you, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for or against the uh changes, ordinance number three nine eight five? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for questions and comments with the council. I guess, uh, taking a, a relook at it, Bree, um, Mayor read through it, I didn't, I guess I didn't see the same concerns, but.
Yeah, I'll take those, that feedback and look at it and um talk to code enforcement as well and see if we're not, I make sure that we're not duplicating things and just cross-reference, so. I'll have those conversations, public hearing.
Just remember something, I'm sorry, let me ask you a question quickly, Bree.
Uh, hold on a second.
I'm sorry, I know you closed, but this has to do with the ordinance. Uh, if somebody, how is this handled, I don't even know how, uh, code, you know, code enforcement handles something. Do they just come by and say, okay, you, uh, we don't like what you've got there, take two pictures? And uh, then we come and haul your car off or, or uh, you know, uh, is there a period that I can, or an individual in the city can argue uh, uh, before uh, it gets to the Board of Equalization or whatever I saw earlier?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and answer that, um, so there's multiple ways that can happen, so the code enforcement's not driving around looking for people to cite. Sometimes if there's like an obvious thing when they're driving, it could be something that they could cite, but most of our complaints, the majority of our complaints are complaint-based. Um, so it's, you know, there's this junked vehicle here, there's the weeds over here, whatever that situation is. Uh, code enforcement will go out and they'll issue a notice, um, try to make contact with the owner if they can. Um, if they can't, they'll do a posting, um, or certified mail, depending on what the situation is, and that's outlined in our code.
Okay.
They give them a certain amount of time to clean up or to fix the, the violation. And if it's not done, then we go back out, or code enforcement goes back out. They review it, see if it's cleaned up or not, and if it's not, then we'll send a city crew out to do the cleanup. Um, there is an appeal process on all the notices, so Mike, if you get a notice stating you need to mow your yard, um, just as an example. You could appeal that to the city administrator within five business days and state, you know, this is some conservation grass or whatever, I don't need to mow it, make your case to the city administrator. And he can either uphold the decision of the code enforcement or, or not.
Okay.
Um, and then he'd issue that decision, so there's lots of different avenues and all that is outlined on the notices.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Comments, questions?
No, I have a problem with the word allowed. When you're, when you're saying a nuisance is something that's allowed, you don't have to do it, it's just allowed. In O, yeah.
Do we need to, um, we can vote on it?
Uh, not tonight, it's just.
Oh, that's right, you're gonna change it, so, yep, alright.
So Bree's gonna cross-reference those and make those changes and then we'll, uh. Is there any further questions, comments, Councilman Cook?
I would like, Pat, I, I'm not quite following what your question or your statement was.
We bring up page three, item O.
Did you say O?
The word allowed?
Uh, maybe it was on p- page three. The use of the word allowed in here. Every, everything else that's allowed is a violation.
Item S has allowed.
So every other act or thing done, made, permitted, allowed, or continued.
So I guess what I'm asking is clarification, does he want that word removed or?
I just wanna, she's gonna look at it, so I, I just, I just felt like in the context of this ordinance, saying that uh, anything that's allowed could be a violation or a nuisance?
I guess, to me, it's allowed under current code, or whatever's allowed under current code, but you can look at it.
But we're defining what's a nuisance in this ordinance.
Yeah, I'll look at that in conjunction with what Mike said and work with code enforcement as well and we'll put something else out there.
Okay.
A little modification.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, the third reading will be held February fourth, two thousand twenty. Item thirteen A ordinances for introduction, first reading, I thirteen A ordinance number three nine eight six. Request to rezone lots one and two, Whispering Timber Estates replat six being a replat of lots one oh three A, one oh three B, one two four A. The west twenty-two feet of lot one twenty-seven and lot one twenty-eight, Whispering Timbers Estates. Lots six, part of lot seven B, eight A two A, part of lot nine except for the south, one hundred and fifty-five feet. And part of lot ten B one, except the south thirty feet. Fair Hill addition from A G, R E and R S eighty-four to R E and R S eighty-four for the purpose of a s- existing single-family residential development. Applicant is Nick Brim and Megan Crane, location is one six zero six Camp Gifford Road. Are the applicants here, by chance?
We're just reading.
Okay. Uh, Susan, will we have to read that again?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or near sixteen oh six Camp Gifford Road. More particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing will be held February fourth, two thousand twenty. Item thirteen B ordinance number three nine eight seven, request to rezone lot two, Twin Valley Church replat one addition from R G twenty-eight to R G twenty-eight dash P S for the purpose of multifamily residential development with site plan approval. Applicant and compass, Design Inc., general location, Fort Crook Road and Grenoble Drive. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about the southwest corner of Normandy Boulevard and Grenoble Drive. More partic- particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing will be held February fourth, two thousand twenty. Item thirteen C ordinance number three nine eight eight, an ordinance amending Bellevue Municipal Code by adding a new section eight dot fourteen regarding small wireless facilities. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Appendix A zoning of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding a new section eight point fourteen regarding small wireless facilities. Regulating the city's processing of applications for the deployment of small wireless facilities by telecommunications companies and to provide for an effective date thereof.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing will be held February fourth, two thousand twenty. Thirteen C one, approve and authorize mayor to sign Resolution Number two zero two zero dash zero five. Repealing Resolution Number two zero one nine dash zero one in its entirety. Item fourteen. Public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A, show cause. Hearing on the proposed con- condemnation of the structures at seven nine five two South Twenty-Fifth Street. Bellevue six A one four seven. Let Mike Christensen talk. Before we open up the public hearing.
Good evening, everyone, I have a short video of seventy-nine fifty-two South Twenty-Fifth Street that I'd like to show first and then be happy to discuss the property and any questions you may have. The property's been deteriorating for years, even before the first certified letter was sent out in twenty seventeen. There holes through the roof, through the siding, animals been going in and out of will, most of the windows have been knocked out of the property, um. Water's been coming through, you can see the ceiling there started to, starting to deteriorate and fall in that location there. Lot of the siding is missing. Foundation's beginning to fail, also, um, several of the uh accessory structures on the property are deteriorating also. We need to get the house removed in order to get to some of those other outbuildings and there are several cars that will bring code enforcement in on if uh resolution is passed on this property.
Is the proposal for the entire site then, the vehicles, the outbuildings?
For the structures and then we'll work with code enforcement to get the vehicles out. You can't, you can't even access those cars, there's so much uh debris and outbuildings and trees growing around them, so it's gonna be an effort to get the, the vehicles out of there.
Okay, is the owner here in the audience anywhere?
Doubtful.
Okay.
Mike, just one, uh, question here, the vehicles, I, so, you're gonna try to get them out before you tear down?
No. The house will make access to get to the, the back part of the property where most of the vehicles are, after the house is removed.
And then?
And then code enforcement can move in and start citing the cars and remove them, correct.
Okay. And then eventually those other buildings will be removed also?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike, how long has this been going on with this property?
I mean, the property's, hasn't been lived in for years, it's been deteriorating, it wasn't addressed, uh, you know, for certification notice until twenty seventeen in the spring.
So it's been quite a while that?
Yeah, since then, we've been putting several notices on the doors and sending certified letters and no response whatsoever.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Um, is there anyone here to speak uh regarding fourteen A or fourteen A one? Nobody here to speak for or against. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Any further comments from the council? Alright, uh, fourteen A one, Resolution Number two zero two zero dash zero one condemning the structures located at seven nine five two South Twenty-Fifth Street, Bellevue six eight one four seven. Councilman Shannon?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash O one condemning the structure at seven nine five two South Twenty-Fifth Street.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch, any further comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Fourteen B, show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation of the structures at seven three one two, South Twenty-Fifth Street, Bellevue six eight one four seven. And I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for this, if there's anybody uh here to speak for or against condemnation on seven three one two, South Twenty-Fifth Street. Um, I'll let you come forward after Mike talks.
I've got a short video of this property also, I'd like to show council and the audience here. This property was uh first addressed from the Permits Department in April of twenty sixteen, it's continued to deteriorate, the roof, they tried to put some tarps on it and stuff just to hold the water out, but all the windows have been knocked out. Mold's starting to grow on the walls inside, the ceiling's starting to collapse in the back portion. All the tiles on the floor are also peeling up. Uh, there's no electricity, heat, any water or anything to this property. Cellar doors deteriorated and pretty much a, a hole in that location there. Uh, foundation is failing in several different locations on it also.
Thank you, is the owner in the audience, if they are, do they wish to speak? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding this condemnation? And the public hearing is open on fourteen B and fourteen B one, if there's anybody here. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Fourteen B one, Resolution Number two zero two zero dash zero two condemning the structures located at seven three one two, South Twenty-Fifth Street, Bellevue six eight one four seven. Councilman Shannon?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash zero two.
Second. Motion by Shannon, seconded by Stenson.
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Welch.
Um, Mike, I'm glad that we're moving forward on this because I've had neighbors that have emailed me and called me about this property and I did reach out to the owner last year and uh, because believe it or not, I had a buyer for the property and couldn't get it, couldn't, just couldn't get it accomplished, so the neighbors will be happy that this is being taken care of.
Yeah, there've been several complaints on the property over the last couple of years.
Any further comments? We have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Stenson, please vote.
I think three years is enough.
All voting yes.
Thank you, fourteen C, show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation of the structure at three six one four Josephine Street, Bellevue six eight one four seven. And I will open up the public hearing regarding fourteen C and fourteen C one and I'll let Mike talk on this property.
This property was first addressed in October of twenty sec- uh, twenty sixteen from the Permits Department, I believe this was one of the original farmsteads in the area. Sarpy County doesn't even show a build date uh on the property. Um, they also have most of the property valued on the land itself, the land is uh seven, seventy-five hundred dollars and about four hundred and fifty-five dollars on the structure.
Is the owner here in the audience? If they are and they'd like to speak, now's the time. Anybody else in the audience, public hearing is open to speak on fourteen C and fourteen C one?
As you can see, the property's deteriorated to the point where it's virtually collapsing on the outside, a lot of the sightings has been removed and, or fallen off, excuse me. Accessory structures are all deteriorating on the property also. This sits in an alleyway, um, behind Edna, so there's several homes that back to this property and look at this in the alley between the cemetery that's located on uh thirty-six and Chandler. This is uh the view from the cemetery side.
Public hearing's still open, anybody here wishing to speak? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Fourteen C one, Resolution Number two zero two zero dash zero three condemning the structure located at three six one four Josephine Street, Bellevue six eight one four seven. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution Number twenty twenty dash zero three.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch.
Mister Mayor.
Yep.
Just a question, Mike, so once these resolutions have been voted on and approved, what's the process after that?
We'll give about thirty days to see if anyone uh makes an attempt to contact a demolition contractor to remove the structure. If in thirty days, no one's come forward to secure a permit, then we'll seek bids uh for the demolition of the properties proceed in that manner, the city will end up tearing them down.
Okay, and then the owner of the property has then assessed that?
There'll be a lien place on the property, yes, if they do not pay the demolition costs.
And then, once they sell it, then the city would be reimbursed based on that lien, okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
The, the animals living at the property, how are they taken care of?
Free will, whatever's in the trash can.
No, but I mean, when you go in there to demolish the structures and, you know, to, to do these things, uh, do they go through and clear the animals out first? Because you know there's animals living in there.
When the demo contractors show up, they virtually open the, the structures up and. When the demo contractors show up, they virtually open the structures up and, you know, to try to see what's inside as far as any physical animals and stuff. Sometimes there's raccoons, opossums, et cetera, but nothing's harmed per se.
Okay.
They're gonna scramble. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Fourteen D, request to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five capital improvement plan. And I will open it up for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five CIP? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and let Councilman Preister in if he's still here.
Yes, I am, Mayor, and thank you very much for the opportunity. I hope I'm not talking too loudly for the room.
They can hear you.
Okay, anyway, I would like to ask the public works director, Jeff, if he could comment. When would the proposed construction start and end? I'm just thinking about conflicts with the events that will take place there over the summer, including the farmer's market that is set and has been approved to start in May.
Well, our intent is to put this out for bid in March, and so it'll probably be end of May, first part of June before construction will actually start. The project does have to be substantially completed by the first, first of July, Rich? For the CDVG money? It's July, right? Okay, so it has to be substantially complete by the first of July, and so there will be some conflict, we're gonna have to work around it. Maybe limit where the farmer's market can be during the time of that construction, we'll have to barricade it off so the public can't be in harm's way with it, but that's where we're at with it.
I'm just wondering if instead of putting it out for bid in March, we put it out soon? And some of the contractors may be a little hungrier in the winter when they have no work, and we might even get better bids doing it earlier and just move the start dates sooner?
We don't have the construction plans ready to put it out any sooner.
Okay, so we'll have to work out events in some way as that unfolds. All right, another question that I have, in my discussion with you before the meeting, you mentioned that we are, I believe, using some CDVG money for this, and that and maybe even your budget may not cover all of the things that we're wanting to do in Washington Park, which to me is a Norman Rockwell Americana kind of a park where we now have our winter light display that is exceptional, we've got the Aeros-Taros Space Parade, and then the after parade events. We have the farmer's markets there, it's a well-used, one of the jewels of Bellevue in my view. And I'm just wanting to make sure we do all of this work and not put some things off. So I'm wondering if you don't think there's enough funding? If we can get some agreement to maybe use community betterment so that we get the full project done and done all under one construction? So I guess the question is not really to you, Jeff, but to my fellow council members who may have some thoughts on it, so I would ask for any input.
You want me to respond? Don, this is Jeff, we are about probably sixty thousand dollars short with CDVG money, but we do have a meeting set up with Abby the first week of February. And so we'll see if there's some additional funds out there for it. And then we have also discussed about using community betterment if we want to widen the interior sidewalks.
Okay, well, I would hope that at least the full council could be presented with all options, all costs as that unfolds. And whatever CDVG money doesn't cover, then we can look at what other ways we can fund it. Thank you, I have no further questions or comments.
Good.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Jeff, is there any possible way we could try to shift some of this work to where we would not interfere with? That park is pretty heavily used in the summer.
Yeah, the problem is, we are obligated to spend this money before July, so we do have to get it done, or we risk the chance of losing it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? So we need a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five capital improvement plan.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, any further comments, questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two zero two zero dash zero six, dissolving resolution number two zero one nine dash thirty-two. And said structures on the subject property, two six one one Harrison Street, may be torn down, the debris removed, and the premises placed in a safe condition pursuant to the order of condemnations entered and approved on the ninth day of April two thousand eighteen. Resolution number two zero one eight dash zero nine stands. Take a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty dash zero six.
I'll second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Shannon?
I just want to confirm this isn't open for public hearing, but is anybody here to speak? Any representatives for the property here, owners of twenty-six eleven Harrison Street? No, okay, just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions from the council? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, item sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the tenth extension to the contract with Justin Toms for custom farming approximately sixty-one acres at Thirty-Sixth and Capeport Road in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. And approve and authorize the mayor to sign the tenth extension to the contract with Justin Toms for custom farming approximately sixty-two acres at the Bellevue Sports Complex in the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand three hundred and nine dollars. And to waive council policy for requiring solicitation of bids for goods and services costing more than thirty thousand dollars. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen F.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Stenson, any further comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the operative IQ licensing agreement for five additional software licenses for the fire and EMS inventory tracking. Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen G.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, sixteen H, approve purchase of five remaining dump trucks planned for replacement in fiscal year nineteen dash twenty budget in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and one dollars. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen H.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Stenson, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Sixteen I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign in their local agreement with the Papio Missouri River Resource District for placement of a permanent pumping station near the Offit Ditch not to exceed thirty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen I.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Shannon, any further comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Jeff, I'm not, thank you, Mayor, Jeff, I'm not sure where Offit Ditch is, or is that also known as Brown River?
Yeah, that's the actual correct name for Brown River is Offit Ditch.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, sixteen J, approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreement with FYRA Engineering LLC for a study regarding the Bellevue Offit Ditch Pump Station Study for replacement of a permanent pumping station located near the Offit Ditch not to exceed thirty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Councilman Stenson?
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, item sixteen K, approve the real estate broker services agreement. And I think, did we get a copy of the? Well, you should have a copy of the contract with the blanks filled in on this one. I don't think that got conveyed on the agenda packet.
The, the last packet, what had happened was in the agenda packet, it's the blank agreement, and then all of the offers that were accepted were in the attachment. And so the document that you received tonight is just incorporating the proposal into this. And if you want me to go over those, I can, if that would be helpful, no, okay. But that's, this is the complete agreement.
Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion, I know Councilman Preister would like to speak on this as well, once I get a motion. Councilman Stenson?
Make motion, we approve sixteen K.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Burns. Councilman Preister, you had some comments?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate being recognized again. I would just like perhaps Mr. Risto or our attorney, Bree Robbins, to just go over the process, putting out an RFP or the selection process, how, how did we go about advertising and then selecting a broker?
Well, there's a process outlined, so we put together a packet that outlined some service agreements and what we were looking for, and we put that out, and it was published by the clerk. And we did receive one offer back, and I believe it was November. We did then open it up again for a public bid to get more offers, and so that was republished, the packet went back out. Anybody would have the opportunity to fill out the packet and submit their offer to the city. We did receive two proposals, and those were opened up at some point in December, I don't have the exact date on me. But you publish in the notice the date that you're gonna open the bids, and so we did that, and then those were presented to Jim to review, and he reviewed them. And this was the best bid out of the two that came forward for the city, and that's what we're presenting for approval.
Okay, thank you very much, I know there are real estate agents who sometimes after the fact say, well, why didn't I get a chance? But as I understand what you're saying, it was put out there twice, and in the second one, we still only had two offers, and we selected what seems to be the best of the two.
That's correct, it was put out twice, and this is the best and a good fit for the city.
Okay, thank you very much for the explanation.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, Bree, real quick, this is for us to sell or purchase?
It's for both, yes.
And, and give me a little bit of idea on the payment structure, especially some, sometimes we sell very little pieces of land. And I guess my concern is, are we gonna get in a situation where we sell a chunk of land for a hundred dollars and we have a broker payment of, you know, eight hundred dollars?
Yeah, there's, there's some things in the smaller scale that we can just continue to do ourselves, there's a few property things that were on the agenda tonight that we wouldn't need those services necessarily for, and if you look at page eleven of the packet that was handed out today, which is Attachment A, Scope of Work, it talks about should the city desire to use the services of the contractor to sell or lease? And should the city desire to use the services of the contractor to purchase or lease? So that's, we have to re-engage, contact with them and say, hey, we have this project, we want you to go look for the property, or we're selling this. And that's kind of a subsequent agreement with, with the real estate agent, there's a lot of the little things that we can keep doing ourselves. Property tax protests, for example, I know Rich is really good at those, those are things that we would just kind of keep internal. So we do have to reach out to actually engage, I guess, that service, if that makes sense.
All right, thank you.
And I don't see a minimum on here, so if it's a thousand dollar deal, it's a six percent commission, it's probably the max we're gonna get charged, so.
Yeah, there's just times when we, especially when we annex, and we did annex a lot of properties, where we'll have an entryway where there's thirty feet maybe next to a house that we want to get rid of adjacent to it, and we're not gonna sell it to anybody, would make no sense, so we usually give an opportunity for the homeowner to buy it, and it's usually, you go out to the courthouse and pay for all the the mess to get the paperwork all straightened out, put in your name, and I just don't want to then be billed, you know, a couple hundred dollars where we don't make any money, we make very little money.
Yeah, and Jim and I have talked about that, and those are all things we're gonna keep in mind, and those kind of little just management type things we'll probably keep doing ourselves.
All right, thank you.
I also had a payment question. In the agreement, it talks to the second paragraph under payments. Compensation structure to be applied shall be dictated by the desired scope of work established in each amendment. So this is to be a master agreement, and there's going to be amendments for each time we engage them?
That's the intent of the agreement, so that it, we're establishing the scope of work, what we're looking for, those sorts of things. But if you do look, it does have the commission rates and stuff like that on page twelve of your packet.
Right, back in Attachment B, so if the commission rate here says six, but we sign an amendment saying eight, he's gonna get eight.
He, he could, we would have to agree to that, and the proposal is six, so there would be probably zero circumstances where we would agree to a higher rate.
It's a bit of my question, are the amendments going to come before the council?
I would say if it's an amendment to a fee, then yes, if it's just the amendments regarding the scope of work, probably not those initial ones, no. Until it gets to the authorizing the mayor to sign the purchase agreement portion of it. But if it's just, if it's fees, yes, would be my thought, unless Jim wants to speak on that. But if it's just the amendment regarding scope of work and the fees remain the same, I wouldn't see a need to bring that every time.
Would you be okay with us approving this, subject to the fact that if there's a change to the fee structure in Exhibit B, that it needs to come back? That amendment would need to come back to the council for approval.
A fee structure to the detriment of the city, or just a?
A change, period.
Any fee change.
That way we know when it's changing.
Jim?
So if we reduce it to three percent? You guys want to approve that?
Yeah, I, I think we ought to be able to take credit for those, yeah, bring it back.
I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Is that going to? Would that interfere with anything that we're trying to get done, if we have to wait for another? Is it something that would have to go through at least one council hearing?
Yeah, it, it would, we do have the real estate agent here as well.
I don't want to, I don't want to
Hold up a transaction?
Hold up something, cause we missed something, we delayed by delaying or waiting.
Calm, can I just ask you, so it's pretty highly unlikely that we would go from six to eight, correct?
Thank you for hearing me, my name is Colin Brannock, I live at 67, 77 Platteville Road, I represent Colliers International. We've never gotten 8%. Fees are fairly standard in the commercial real estate brokerage world, and depending on the type of product involved, they range from about 3, 3.5% up to about 6.
When would the city be charged the $100 an hour consulting fee that's in this agreement?
Typically, that's where you would ask me to come in and do complete overviews of, you know, a portfolio management, what you've got, what we could sell it for, that kind of stuff, where we're really just trying to get our arms around what the city has, as opposed to actually getting involved in brokering properties for you.
So not to the extent of an appraisal?
Correct.
And Pat, I don't have any issue with bringing it back if there's a change in fees, I do worry a little bit about what Councilman Cook said, if, if it's something that is maybe time sensitive, and it's not to a detriment of the city, we're not changing the fees to the detriment of the city, ultimately, you would have to approve the purchase agreement, so now we're coming back twice, and we're delaying the process 30 to 45 days. So I guess I would ask for some latitude that if it's a detriment to the city, we would get that approval, but if it's the same or, or lesser a benefit that we could proceed in our day-to-day operations, and then you would authorize the purchase agreement.
Maybe it's just procedurally easier that we agree that you'll present the amendments with the purchase agreements then?
I would be fine with that. Well, with the understanding, but when we have the amendments, those are already, that would already be done, because we've already now agreed to a scope of work and.
I understand that, but we, we would still get oversight over these amendments, that's what I'm after.
I would have no issue with that, with the understanding that we would still be able to proceed on the day-to-day.
Right.
Of those, but putting that before you so that you know what we're doing in the amendments.
Exactly.
Okay.
We okay with that?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I, I, talking to Jim and everybody else.
Basically, if we engage the services, there's going to be a purchase agreement that comes before us anyway for approval, I'm saying when they present that purchase agreement to us, that they have to show us the amendment for the real estate services. That way, we're not gonna hold it up for them to engage it, but we're gonna get to see it and provide our oversight role.
With the understanding that it's already.
Right.
Done on that one, and I guess if you perceive issues down the road, then we can come back and kind of change that process, but with the understanding that the amendment would already be completed, and you wouldn't be able to change the amendment.
Just gives us oversight over the contract.
Okay.
You're not gonna make an amendment. We're gonna leave 16K alone and approve or disapprove.
We're just agreeing that you're gonna send it to us.
You're just.
I'm just, I'm, it's not an amendment that we're making, is my understanding, it's just.
Right.
It's just sort of.
It's a procedural agreement.
Courtesy of me just giving it to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
I was wondering if Colin wants to raise his.
Commission right now. Councilwoman Welch?
So Calm, just, the $100 would be maybe if the city says, hey, we've got some land over here, come over here and tell us what this property is worth, doing a market analysis and a study, that's where you're gonna be paid, and they may decide that they want to sell it, they don't want to sell it, but you're reimbursed for your time and energy put on that, is that correct?
I think what you're referring to there is a broker opinion of value, a BOV, yeah, exactly.
Okay, and so, and you don't get involved in appraisals, because obviously that is done by a certified appraiser that does it, once the purchase agreement has come through. With, with regards to commercial real estate, I know in the residential world, when there's a purchase agreement, we have to provide a list of costs, do you have to do that in the commercial world as well? Costs that are to the buyer or to the seller?
That's.
Closing statement?
I think what you're referring, yeah, normally, there's no costs associated within the document itself, except for stating who picks up certain parts of the issues involved, such as a phase one, an altar, things like that, and it's not so much the cost, because the cost is not laid out yet. It, what we'll do is say we're splitting cost, or buyer is picking up costs, and each, each contract's different.
Okay, because in the residential world, if you make an offer on a property, then we have to give you a cost sheet that gives you an idea of how much money you may need to bring to the table, and then with the seller, we also have to give a cost sheet to give them an idea as to what is this purchase agreement going to cost you, and you don't do that in the commercial world, correct?
No, we don't, oftentimes, you can't anticipate the costs, take for example, the environmental issue, a phase one depending on the company that's hired, could be $4,000, $5,000, if there's an issue with the phase one, as it would say in your purchase agreement, now we're onto a phase two, if there's an issue again, now we're onto phase three, and it's all bad for all of us, and now we're running into the tens of thousands, so you can't anticipate, you, you can't write the amendment, you don't know what the costs are going to be.
Sure, and the reason I brought this up is because I thought that might help Mr. Shannon's question about the amendment as to what this would cost the city, and an idea if there was a cost sheet, but obviously, you don't do that, and so it becomes irrelevant.
That's really upfront during the negotiations as to who's picking up costs, and getting a good idea of, well, if we're the seller, we've got a pretty good idea of what we're selling, so we want to be able to negotiate all the terms and conditions to our favor.
Okay, perfect. By the way, I love your explanations, because you've got a great accent, so.
Thank you.
I didn't have this, I didn't have this question until everybody started talking, but let's just say we have a building on a lot the city wants to sell, I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna charge us for the price opinion, but you're gonna get the listing, so.
No, 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 no.
Just wanted to get that on record.
That's just part of my job.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are we voting on?
I don't know, I'm looking right now.
No, it's $16K, Real Estate Broker Services, we have a motion by Stenson, seconded by Burns, if there's no further, did, did Don talk?
Yes, I did.
All right, no further questions, and go ahead and vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 17, Administration Reports. I'll have Councilman Preister want to comment on those?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and the report, it lists the newly designated or redesignated double A++ standard in poor's bond rating for the city of Bellevue. I just want to underscore, this is the second time we've gotten it, and we have not seen that from all cities, but I think Bellevue is very well managed financially, which is a credit to the council, the administration, our staff, and certainly our finance department, that we can get such a good rating, which means we get a lower interest rate at times because it's a more secure loan, so I, I just recommend to everybody for doing a good job on that. The second thing I wanted to comment on was again relating financial management, and that's that we have created a new system of selling surplus property. The city of Bellevue used to have an annual sale, and people would just come, and there would be bids on that property, and people, the highest bidder would take it, but it was pretty much restricted locally, and people who may really want something and willing to pay more, didn't know about it or couldn't be here. We have established a program through risk management, and to date, as it says in the administrator's report, the city of Bellevue has collected $391,000 for this surplus property, and I think that's a credit again to our good staff and our good management, and always looking at a better way, a different way to improve our services, so my thanks to everyone.
Thank you for that, I would second that as well.
My compliments to the chef, who cooks our books.
That's an old pun, just explain it, he wore a chef's hat, stirrer one night, so.
And he doesn't cook the books.
Any other comments?
Yes, some did.
Okay, we will enter those into the record, and there is no closed session, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch. Please vote.